Now before solving the next question, now please see here sir. We already know this very, very important key point, we have solved so many questions on this key point also already. That key point is if x plus one by x is equal to k. If x plus one by x is equal to k, then x square plus one by x square will be equal to k square minus two. We have solved so many questions on this already and that is not the end of this particular concept. We will solve few more questions on this concept also in the next few problems. Now similarly, similarly, the same if condition holds good here also. If x plus one by x is equal to k, then x cube plus one by x cube. X cube plus one by x cube will be equal to k cube minus three k, right? It is k cube minus three k or if I take a k common factor, it becomes k into k square minus three. The proof is also very simple, let us not waste our time by proving all these things also right now. But if x plus one by x is equal to k, then x cube plus one by x cube will always be equal to k cube minus three k. Or in other words, it is k times of k square minus three. Now see here sir, why did I discuss this? Now if you see the twenty first question, this is one of the favorite questions for SSC CGL. One of the very, very repeated patterns of SSC CGL is what you are seeing right now on the screen. If a plus one by a is equal to seventeen, that means the given condition says a plus one by a is equal to seventeen. But what is that they are asking you, what is the value of a power four plus one by a square? Whole thing divided by a square minus three a plus one, this is what they are asking you in the question. Now see here sir, it is very, very simple, it's very simple to solve this kind of questions. Why? Because I know that the question is giving you a condition wherein the power of a is one. It is a power one plus one by a power one. But the question has a power called as two here in the denominator. I want to reduce that power of two to a power of one, how can I reduce it? It is very simple, if I want to reduce this power two to power one, divide the entire expression by a power one. Divide the entire expression in the denominator by a power one. If I divide the entire expression of denominator by a power one, then I should also divide the entire expression of numerator also by a power one. That means a power four divided by a, it becomes a cube. Plus one by a square divided by a, it becomes one by a cube. Whole thing divided by a square by a is a minus three a by a is three, so it is minus three. A square by a is a, three a by a is nothing but three, so it is a minus three plus one by a is what we have at the last term. So the denominator totally becomes, the denominator totally becomes, this becomes a minus three. A minus three plus one by a, but we know that a plus one by a according to the question is seventeen. So denominator is seventeen minus three, it is fourteen, so denominator should be fourteen. Or denominator should be a multiple of fourteen or not a multiple of fourteen probably, it can be a factor of fourteen also. So definitely the fourth option can be eliminated because the denominator is nine, nine is never a factor of fourteen. So now what should be the numerator in that case? Answer can have the denominator seven, answer can have the denominator seven or it can be fourteen. Now there are three options, so I cannot solve it by options, answer options right now. I need to find the value of a cube plus one by a cube. I have already told you before the starting of this problem. If a plus one by a is equal to k, in this question that k value is seventeen. Then a cube plus one by a cube will be, will become k into k square minus three. Seventeen into seventeen square minus three, seventeen square is two eighty nine, two eighty nine minus three is two eighty six. If I further simplify this, this is nothing but two times of seven, this is nothing but two times of one forty three. So denominator should become seven, so answer option C is also ruled out right now. Either it should be option A or option B. So multiply seventeen into one forty three and find out whether it is option A or option B. But the smartness always lies in not multiplying and getting the answer. Smartness lies in finding the unit digit and short, simplifying it is a shortcut method. That means the unit digit in seventeen is seven, unit digit in one forty three is three, seven into three is twenty one. That means unit digit in the answer should be one. Answer option B is also ruled out right now because the unit digit is five in option B. So the correct answer for this question is two four three one divided by seven. The one important learning in this question is whenever a plus one by a is equal to seventeen. A cube plus one by a cube will always be equal to k cube minus three k. And if you know that property, then this question can be solved in the most easiest format. And I am repeating you once again, this is one of the favorite questions in SSC CGL examination. Let us move on to the next question, question number twenty two. Now see here sir, question number twenty two, this also is one of the very, very favorite questions of SSC CGL examination. This question will come in almost every shift, almost every shift this kind of questions will keep on coming. Now see here, the question says, let me write it. X is equal to two plus two root three divided by two minus two root three. X is equal to two plus through two root three, sorry, two plus root three divided by two minus root three. And y is given as two minus root three divided by two plus root three. Now if you observe carefully before solving the further question or before seeing what is actually asked in the question. If you observe carefully, x is two plus root three by two minus root three, y is nothing but the reciprocal of x. That means if I multiply x and y, this and this will cancel, two minus root three, two minus root three will cancel. The product will give you one, right? The product is nothing but one or in simple language, I can say y and x are reciprocals of each other. Both are absolutely same, right? Y and x are reciprocals of each other. Now what is that they are asking you in the question? They are asking you to find x square plus y square plus xy value. Now if I further simplify, this is x square plus, y is nothing but one by x. So y square is one by x square plus xy value we know it as one. Now this is what they are asking you in the question. Now think little logically sir, little logical thinking will give you the answer so fast. X square plus one by x square is what I require, right? That is what I need. Now x square plus one by x square can be easily calculated if I know x plus one by x value. That means we know the property saying that if x plus one by x is equal to k. Then x square plus one by x is, x square is not at all a difficult task to find. It is just nothing but k square minus two, it is very simple. That means if I want to find x square plus one by x square, I should know x plus one by x, right? I should know x plus one by x. Now how to calculate x plus one by x value? It is once again very simple, one by x is nothing but this y, right? Agreed, right? One by x is nothing but y value, that means this y whatever they have given, it is nothing but one by x. So can I say that x is nothing but two plus two root three, sorry, two plus root three divided by two minus root three? Let me write it, x is nothing but two plus root three divided by two minus root three. Similarly, y is nothing but two minus root three divided by two plus root three. Whenever I want to find the reciprocal sum, whenever I want to find the sum of the reciprocals. I already taught you a very, very simpler method in my beginning of algebra topic saying that this two can also be written as root four. Whenever you want to find the sum of the reciprocals, it is very simply easily can be written as two times of. Forget about the square root signs and write as it is, it is four plus three divided by four minus three. I hope the idea is clear, but more importantly, everything should be expressed in terms of square root. Two should be written as root four, right? So this is nothing but four plus three is seven, seven times of two is fourteen, fourteen divided by one is fourteen. That means x plus one by x, I know it as fourteen right now. And whenever I know x plus one by x value as fourteen, x square plus one by x square is fourteen square one ninety six minus two. That means x square plus one by x square is one ninety four. So my final answer will be one ninety four is x square plus one by x square plus one. So the answer finally for this question is one ninety five. But this is one of the lengthy method, yes, this is a good method to be implemented. But this is not the best method to be implemented because it kills our time in problem solving. Why will it kill our time? Because x square plus one by x square can be known as one ninety four only if I know the value of x plus one by x as fourteen. Without knowing that value as fourteen, I am unable to find the value of x square plus one by x square as one ninety four. So first you need to find x square, x plus one by x value, then you can easily find x square plus one by x square as one ninety four in this particular question. So it's a little lengthy cumbersome processor. So we will switch on to a beautiful methodology called as method two, which is actually a derivative of method one itself. But we will give you the answer in letter type. Now first of all, what is that which is asked in the question? Question is asking you x square plus y square plus xy, this is what they are asking you. I can further simplify it as x square plus, y square is one by x square plus xy is one. Now in my previous method, I found out x plus one by x value, then I found out x square plus one by x square value. I substituted and got it, but you don't need to find x plus one by x and back substitute x square plus one by x square and then waste your time sir. Very, very simple, x square plus one by x square will always be of the form k square minus two. It will always be of the form k square minus two and this plus one, I will write it as it is. That means your answer will be equal to a form called as k square minus one in this question. Or in simple language, shift this minus one to the left hand side. Answer, take the answer options, add one to that answer options and when you add one, it should give you a perfect square which is of the form k square. Answer should become a perfect square, that means answer options when added with one should become a perfect square. Check out which option is satisfying like that. If I go option by option, first option is one eighty five. If I add one for one eighty five, it becomes one eighty six, it is not a perfect square, ruled out. Third option is two hundred plus one, two not one, not a perfect square, ruled out. Fourth option is one seventy five plus one, one seventy six, not a perfect square, ruled out. Second option is one ninety five plus one, which is one ninety six, which is nothing but fourteen square, which is a perfect square. Very, very easy way of solving, you don't actually need to find x plus one by x like the way you have solved it in method one. Very simple, whenever x plus one by x is k, x square plus one by x square will always be of the form k square minus two. It is always true, similarly x power four plus one by x power four will also be of the form k square minus two. X power eight plus one by x power eight will also be once again of the form k square minus two. So if you know that concept which we have already solved in our previous problems. So you can directly say that for this question, it is k square minus two added with one. Answer should be of the form k square minus one, only one option, one ninety five is satisfying. I hope question number twenty two is very, very clear for you people now. Just to make it easy for you people, question number twenty three is exactly similar to question number twenty two. Once you see this x value, once you see this y value, within a second you should come to a conclusion that x into y is nothing but equal to one, right? Let me also solve by using method one also in this particular. So that if it is not clear for you in my previous question, how to solve method one, let it be clear at least now. Xy is one because x and y are reciprocals of each other, that means y is nothing but one by x. So can I say that, can I say that x plus one by x, suppose x plus y, I need to add these two values right now. X plus y or in other words, x plus one by x directly can be written as two times of, remove the square roots and just write the numerical value, numerator should be plus, denominator should be minus, these kind of things we have already seen it sir. So it is three plus two without the square roots divided by three minus two. So five times of two is ten, x plus one by x is ten. Now what is that they are asking you in this question, very simple, they are asking you x square plus y square minus xy. X square plus y square is one by x square minus xy is nothing but one. So that means when I know that x plus one by x value is ten, x square plus one by x square will be ten square minus two. Hundred minus two, write this minus one as it is, hundred minus three, answer for this question is ninety seven, which is nothing but option A. But instead of finding x plus one by x value ten and then getting x square plus one by x square value, we can directly switch on to method two saying that the given question is x square plus y square minus xy. X square plus y square is one by x square minus xy is one. So we know a beautiful condition that x square plus one by x square will always be of the form k square minus two. Write this minus one as it is, that means your answer should be of the form k square minus three. If you observe the answer options, the only option which is of the form k square minus three is option A ninety seven. And that is the correct answer for this question. Option D is k square minus two, but it should be of the form k square minus three. First of all, option B and option C can be easily eliminated, that means the answer for this question is option A ninety seven. Now a smart student sitting in the class might get this doubt. Sir, what if I have another option hundred and eighteen? Hundred and eighteen is also eleven square minus three, which is nothing but k square minus three. That means the first option is also of the form k square minus three, third option is also of the form k square minus three. Which one should I pick as my correct answer and that is the reason I have taught you method one. Whenever you have more than one option, having the same condition of k square minus three for this question, use method one. If there is only one option, please mark it and move ahead, don't waste your time. I hope the idea is very, very clear for you people, when to use method one, when not to use method one. See here sir, see the next question. Question number twenty four, three plus root seven divided by three minus root seven, it is nothing but m. Three minus root seven divided by three plus root seven, it is nothing but n. So one thing for sure is the product is one, that means they are reciprocals of each other. Another thing for sure, another thing for sure is, okay, let me expand it. M minus n whole square is m square plus n square minus two mn plus mn, I will write it as it is. So this is m square, n value is one by m, n square is one by m square. Minus two mn plus mn, it is minus mn, right? Minus mn, but we know that mn value is nothing but how much? It is one, so it is m square plus one by m square minus one. But we don't want to simplify the entire thing like the way we solved in method one in the previous two questions. I know, I am sure that you understood method one by now, so we know a beautiful property. M square plus one by m square will be of the form k square minus two followed by minus one. So answer should be of the form k square minus three, within seconds you should solve all these questions. K square minus three, only one option two fifty three, which is two fifty six minus three. The other options are definitely not satisfying, therefore they are incorrect. I am sure that you are able to solve this way of problems very easily from now onwards. Now question number twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, all the three questions are almost the similar kind of questions. The reason behind solving the first three questions or the question twenty two, twenty three, twenty four is to build that platform for you people to solve the next question, question number twenty five. Within seconds, because this question, question number twenty five is your original SSC two thousand seven mains examination question. This is your original SSC mains question sir. Same question, we have just put it on the screen and in this question, instead of giving you n value which is the reciprocal of m, they are directly saying in the question itself as mn is equal to one. Now see here, that means, that means can I say that, can I say that m value is nothing but seven plus four root three, right? M value is nothing but seven plus four root three and mn value is nothing but one. That means I can say that because mn value is nothing but equal to one, I can say that n is nothing but one by m, right? N is nothing but one by m. Now think little logically sir, we have one beautiful condition, we have one beautiful condition which I have discussed in my pre, in my previous classes also, that condition says if x is nothing but root a plus root b. And there is another beautiful condition, square root of a square minus square root of b square is equal to one. Then I can directly say that, I can directly say x plus one by x as two times of root a and x minus one by x as two times of root b. Same thing, that means instead of x I have m here and instead of root a I have seven here. Instead of root b I have four root three here, root a whole square, that means seven square is forty nine. Root b whole square, four root three whole square is sixteen into three, forty eight. If the difference is becoming one, the condition says the difference should become one, yes. The difference is becoming one here also, that means can I say that x added with its reciprocal is two times of the bigger number, bigger number is nothing but this root a. So similarly here also I can say that m added with its reciprocal one by m is nothing but two times of the bigger number seven. So two into seven is fourteen, that means I came to know the value of m plus one by m in this particular question. But what is actually asked in the question, question says one by m square plus one by n square. That means the question they are actually asking you, one by m square, one by m square plus one by n square. One by, n is one by m or I can write m as one by n, one by n square will be equal to m square. That means very, very easy right now sir, if m plus one by m is fourteen, m square plus one by m square will be fourteen square minus two. One ninety six minus two is one ninety four, answer for this question is one ninety four. But this is once again, I call it as method one because method two, you actually don't need to find the value of m plus one by m as fourteen. If you are very smart, if you are very smart, m value is seven plus four root three and they are saying that the product of m and n is equal to one, that means m square plus one by m, m square is what is actually asked in this particular question. M square plus one by m square, m square plus one by m square should be definitely of the form k square minus two. Within a second, within second, this original mains questions can be solved within a second or a two. I hope this beautiful logic, finding out the problems in the most easiest way possible is very, very clear for every student who is listening to this class. I hope the idea is extremely clear for you people sir. Now before moving on to the next question, let us see a very, very important key point. Now one important key point which we are already aware of is if x plus one by x is equal to k. Then x square plus one by x square is equal to k square minus two. This we are already aware of sir, there is no new learning in this. The same thing can be written as, instead of plus on the left hand side of if condition, I will put minus on the left hand side of if condition. So this becomes if x minus one by x is equal to k, right? If x minus one by x is equal to k, then again we are finding the same thing called as x square plus one by x square. This particular thing will be same in both the cases, don't get confused. Right hand side of then condition becomes, instead of k square minus two, it becomes k square plus two. The proof is also very simple sir, let us not waste our time in proving all these things. Let us directly jump on to the problem solving. That means before solving the problem, one more time I am repeating, the left hand side of if condition, if it is plus, the right hand side of then condition will be minus. Similarly, if the right hand side of if condition is, sorry, if the left hand side of if condition is minus, then the right hand side of then condition will be plus. Simple, simple way of understanding. Now why am I doing this? Why did I teach you this second condition here? Please see my twenty sixth question, twenty sixth question says x multiplied with two minus six divided by five x is equal to two divided by x. Your question says find the value of x square plus one by x square, right? Find the value of x square plus one by x square. Now see here sir, once again it is very, very simpler, very, very easy way of solving once again. Now can I say that if I multiply this x inside, it becomes two x minus six by five into x, this x will cancel with this x. It is six by five, right hand side is two by x. Shift this two by x to the left hand side, six by five to the right hand side. Two x minus two by x is equal to six by five, two common factor, this becomes x minus one by x is equal to six by five. Two into one, two into three, that means we are left with x minus one by x is equal to three by five. Let me write it, x minus one by x is equal to three by five, this is what we are left with. And we just solved, saw this particular, what is the property saying that if x minus one by x is k, then x square plus one by x square will be equal to k square plus two. K square is three by five whole square plus two, nine by twenty five plus two is, answer for this question is fifty nine by twenty five. That means the answer is fifty nine by twenty five, which is option B. Now this I will call it as my method one. Now I will also teach you another method, but the second method might not give you the answer for this particular question. But it will give you some concept to learn and that concept you can implement or try it in your examinations. If it works out good, if it does not work out not, then you can switch on to method one anyway. Now what is the meaning of works out, then will it not work out, will it work out for limited number of problems? Nothing like that sir, see here, why am I saying that statement saying as if it works out, if it is fine, something like that. Now see here, method two, see here sir, method two, if you observe method one, everything till this point is absolutely same. What is the question, question says x square plus one by x square and if in the if condition, right hand side is minus. So we know that x square plus one by x square, finally the answer will be of the form k square plus two, right? K square plus two, that means if you observe carefully, k square is a perfect square. Perfect square will always be a positive value, two is anyway a positive value. I am adding positive value with another positive value, that means my final answer also will be positive value. If you observe the answer options, the first option is negative, that definitely cannot be the answer option. The fourth option is negative, that cannot be the answer option. Either the second option should be correct or the third option should be correct. Because there are two options which are positive in this question, I cannot apply method two and justify which should be the correct answer. That is the reason I said if it works out good, if it does not work out, move on to method one. if it works out good if it does not work out move on to method one because there are two options I will have to work out with method one only in this question but in case in case if your question has only one option which is a positive value assume that option B is having positive option C is minus twenty four by some other value for example then you can directly mark second option and move ahead instead of solving all these intermediate extra steps these all things can be definitely eliminated if you are good in shortcuts what we are teaching you right now and I am pretty sure that the first twenty six questions whatever we have solved till now this should be very clear sir again and again I am saying you never ever forget the previous shortcuts what I thought in the first few questions of this algebra you will solve algebra so easily if you learn the shortcuts what I am teaching you right now trust me take my word there are so many varieties of questions which I have in my bucket I will take one by one slowly slowly increasing the level of difficulty you should just have that doubtless trust and listen to all my videos and learn algebra in the most easiest way possible to crack your SSC exam sir I hope till this point it is very clear for you people sir now see here sir another very very important key point before moving on to the next problem now we already know this key point the key point says if x plus one by x is equal to k then x square plus one by x square is equal to k square minus two correct right this is something we already know it now if you observe very carefully here x is one of the variable and the coefficient for that is one that means x is multiplied with one the other thing is one by x one by x is the second part here and the coefficient of one by x is also one that means one by x is also multiplied with one that means x is multiplied with one one by x is also multiplied with one what if x and one by x are not multiplied by one but they are multiplied by some other constant suppose x is multiplied by two one by x is also multiplied by two suppose x is multiplied by seven one by x is also multiplied by seven forget about x and one by x being multiplied by the same constant what if x is multiplied by five one by x is multiplied by some other constant four x is multiplied by nine one by x is multiplied by some other constant eleven that means I am talking about a scenario where x is multiplied by some constant a and one by x is multiplied by some other constant called as b I will write it as one by x into b b by x suppose if this is the case ax plus b by x is equal to k if this kind of varieties of problems are given how to deal with this kind of forms what is the method that I need to apply to deal with this kind of forms that is what we are learning right now now see here sir it is very simple very very simple in our previous classes we derived this x plus one by x is equal to k how did we went went through the derivation how did we prove it actually how did we prove that x square plus one by x square will be equal to k square minus two how did we prove it it's very simple sir we proved it by squaring on both sides correct right by squaring on both sides same logic here also now I have something called as ax plus b by x is equal to k and if I want to continue my proof the one thing which I will do is squaring both sides exactly the same there is no change at all squaring both sides if I square left side will become a square x square plus b square divided by x square plus two a b two into this term into b by x x will cancel you are left with only a b right side is nothing but k square so finally I can conclude that a square x square plus b square divided by x square is equal to k square minus two a b I hope this proof is very clear now in a very simple language if I want to say it to you people sir in my previous case in my previous case now this is my generalized form this is the general form of this particular expression if I want a particular case put a value as one b value as one if I put a and b values as one a square is one square x square that is nothing but x square b square is one square by x square that is nothing but one by x square k square minus two into a value is one b value is also one two into one into one is nothing but two itself so this particular top condition what I have written at the top of the screen is actually derived from this itself that means in simple language whenever whenever let me write it one final time before moving on to problems here let me write it here itself sir okay where is the place there is no place itself okay let me let me erase this screen and write it here if if ax plus b by x is equal to k then very very important point is a square x square plus b square by x square is earlier we know a form we knew a form called as k square minus two write down the same k square minus two right now also but for this two multiply the coefficient of x that is a multiply the coefficient of one by x that is nothing but b so final expression is k square minus two a b now why did I discuss this you might get a doubt why did I discuss this now before going to y the one more extension of this notation is what if suppose ax minus b by x is equal to k you already know in the if condition if the left hand side is minus in the then condition the right hand side should be plus simple sir very simple very very simple way of understanding let us not at all complicate and make you people also get confused now see here why did I discuss all these things say this twenty seventh question you will understand this now the question says two a minus one by two a is equal to six what is that they are asking a square plus one divided by sixteen a square sixteen a square I will write it as four a whole square this is what they are asking now see here sir I should always try to express the given condition in terms of what is being asked in the question now what is being asked in the question a square plus one by four a whole square in that in the denominator I have four right I have four in the denominator in this asked for condition asked condition has four in the denominator but the given condition is not having four in the denominator it is only having two in the denominator you know that when the asked condition is having four given condition also if I make it four it becomes very easy it is already having two in the denominator I should make it four divide both sides by two that means two a divided by two it is a minus one by two a divided by two it is one by four a is equal to six divided by two it is three getting the idea sir six divided by two it is three now this is exactly similar to what I have discussed just now that means if if x minus sorry where it is if I wrote the condition somewhere right sir yes ax minus b by x is equal to k there a square x square plus b square by x square is k square plus two a b that means the answer for this thing should be equal to k square that means three square plus two into a a is nothing but the coefficient of this a it is one b b is nothing but the coefficient of this one by a so it is one by four so final answer should be three plus one by two sorry three square plus one by two that means nine plus one by two nine plus one by two is nothing but nineteen by two should be the answer for this question I hope you are very clear why I discussed this particular key point before solving the question what I have solved in question number twenty seven the idea should be very very clear for each and every student who is listening to this particular class sir next question number twenty eight very very beautiful question more importantly this is your original question which had come in two thousand seventeen means two thousand seventeen means original examination question is what we are discussing right now extremely beautiful extremely important question listen to this carefully sir listen to this very very carefully question says a is equal to root five plus one b is equal to root five minus one and you need to find the value of something let us see what is that something but having said that now observe carefully what is that they are asking you a square divided by b square that means a value is given as root five plus one a square is root five plus one whole square b value is given as root five minus one b square is root five minus one whole square that means if I am a very very ordinary student who do not want to think in a different way like the way A and C teaches their students if I am a very ordinary student assume that I am a student who is not learning from A and C assume that I am learning from some xyz institute and I don't know how to solve this question in a shortcut method what I will come to a conclusion seeing the question is a square by b square is find the square of a find the square of b divide one by the other get some value b square by a square is whatever the value you got here a square by b square reciprocate it that means reverse of it will be b square by a square and keep on substituting simplifying and keep on solving and finally arrive at one out of these four options which are given and if that is the way if you are solving then definitely you should start listening to A and C videos sir definitely this is not the way you need to solve like the way I explained you right now you should definitely switch on to a method which I will be teaching you right now and I am sure that I will teach you multiple methods for this particular question it is completely up to an individual which method you want to implement now listen to one of the methods as of now now first of all can I say that first of all can I say that a square by b square is one of the term b square by a square is another term four into a four into a by b is the third term four into b by a is the fourth term six is nothing but the fifth term that means the given actually asked question is having five different terms there are five different terms in the question which is being asked and you are asked to add all those five different terms think little logically sir if they are giving you such a lengthy expression if they are definitely giving you such a lengthy expression there should be some purpose behind giving that expression right without any purpose they will not give you such a lengthy expression that is hundred percent for sure that is something which should strike your mind immediately seeing that expression itself when you see such kind of lengthy expression first thing that should come to your mind is there is definitely some purpose behind be giving this expressions here otherwise they will not give such a big expression now let us analyze or observe closely what is that purpose now observe carefully sir I will simplify this expression first term is a square by b square I will write it as a by b whole square everyone listen carefully second term is b square by a square I will write it as b by a whole square now let me understand in the way you will understand it better let me make you realize in the way you will understand it better can I say that a by b whole square is of the form x square b by a whole square is of the form y square that means I know that x plus y whole square is nothing but x square plus y square plus two into x into y that means that two xy term is missing let me write it two into x into y x is a by b y is b by a a by b into b by a is nothing but one so two into one is nothing but two itself that means can I say that if I combine these three terms if I combine these three terms I can write it as x plus y whole square I hope this should be very clear for you people this can be written as x plus y whole square now you understood it but immediately you will get another doubt saying that okay sir you wrote the first term you wrote the second term what about the third term fourth term and fifth term where did they go did they did they all of a sudden go somewhere no why why are you not taking care of those last three terms which is given in the question I will take care of right now sir do not worry I will take care this is how you need to analyze it I will take care of every term right now now if you carefully understand if you carefully observe I will continue writing the expression in the third term it is four into a by b in the fourth term it is four into b by a I will take four common factor and then write them as a by b plus b by a right a by b plus b by a I will write it now third term is written fourth term is also written what about fifth term fifth term is given in the question as six but out of that six which is given in the question I have already written two but another four is pending because two plus four itself is nothing but six now I have written all the five terms but I have not written in the same way it is given in the question what is the use of writing it in the same way we are trying to simplify it that means first three terms I can write it as a by b plus b by a whole square plus remaining terms also I know how to write it right now now see here sir let us further analyze it this is how beautifully you should analyze it and simplify the problem sir let us further analyze now see here can I say that this is of the form m square let me write it also there is no harm in writing anyway this is of the form m square plus can I say that four can be written as two square right four can be written as two square the two square is of the form n square now if I want to express this as m plus n whole square m plus n whole square is m square plus m square n square into sorry plus two into m into n correct right two into m into n now can I say that this two I will write it as it is but the question is having four actually right the question is having four actually but this out of this four I have already written two another two I will write it here because that two is corresponding to n I hope you are understanding two into two is four so four is written so this two is written this n value two is written so m is nothing but a by b plus b by a that means this entire expression can I write like like this sir this is how beautifully I want you people to analyze this entire expression can be written as m plus n whole square where m is nothing but a by b plus b by a n is nothing but two so in simple m plus n m is a by b plus b by a and n is nothing but two whole square that means initially the question whatever they have given they asked us to add these five terms but instead of adding those five term just like that and simplifying it in a very very difficult way we have reduced that to this beautiful screen format whatever it is observed on the screen right now as a by b plus b by a whole square now we also know how to solve this further because the a value is root five plus one b value is root five minus one that means root five plus one divided by root five minus one plus root five minus one divided by root five plus one plus two that is what we are actually trying to find but the thing is this should completely be squared now we already know it sir there is no greatness or difficulty in solving this this entire black color thing what I am marking right now this is x plus this is one by x x plus one by x can be written as two times of X plus one by X can be written as two times of, forget about the square roots. So it is five plus one divided by five minus one. These are all things you should never forget what we have done earlier. So two into one is two, two into two is four, five plus one is six, six by two is three. That means this entire black color marked one is three plus two. Answer is three plus two whole square. Answer for this question is five square which is twenty-five. Answer for this question is option D, right? Answer for this question is option D. Now you might think that sir, this is a method, how will we understand that we should analyze like this? Yes sir, you explained it, you analyzed it, you explained, we also understood how to analyze right now. But while sitting in the examination, how will we understand that we should analyze it? You should analyze it, but before you analyze this in the examination hall. You should practice this kind of things so many times sir. You should definitely practice. I am repeatedly saying you people without practice, this kind of analysis will not be. Will not come to your mind in the examination hall. This will haunt you in the examination hall and it will make you realize that this is one of the toughest problem. But honestly speaking, this is one of the most easiest problem you can get in an S S, in an S S E paper. But it will become easy only when you practice this kind of problems earlier before going to examination. Now whatever method I have solved right now, this I will call it as method one, right? This I will call it as method one. Now sir, what is method two then? Is method two different completely from method one? Definitely no, method two is not at all different from method one. That means whatever I have solved in method one, this entire analysis whatever I have solved. And I have come to a conclusion that this will be finally of the form. A plus B, A by B plus B by A plus two whole square till this point of a time. Till this point, everything what I have solved in method one is absolutely same applicable to method two also. But from here, from here, I will not waste my time writing all these things. And finding all these things and back substituting and then getting the answer. These all are wastage of times in my examination hall. Because if you are little smart, this entire thing, some entire thing inside the bracket is squared. That means answer should be a perfect square. Simple right sir, answer should be a perfect square. See the answer options, first option is thirty-one not a perfect square. Twenty-three root five, twenty-seven root five definitely are not perfect square because they are irrational numbers. The only option which is a perfect square is twenty-five. Sir, what if I have another option which is a perfect square, suppose option E is forty-nine? I have taught you method one for that reason itself. If there are more than one options which are perfect squares, then you should apply method one. And you should find A by B plus B by A value, substitute it as three and then find the value as three plus two whole square as twenty-five. But it is actually not required with the given options. And I am telling you, this is your original two thousand seventeen mains questions. With the exact options what is being displayed on the screen right now. You should be smart enough to say that answer should be of a perfect square form. Because the final answer should be of A by B plus B by A plus two whole square. That means the entire square, entire thing should is squared, that means answer should be a perfect square. Answer should be a perfect square, there is only one option which is twenty-five, mark it and move ahead. I hope the idea is very clear sir, you should learn like this. You should definitely start thinking like this in the examination hall. If you do not think like this, I think you are definitely going to face a lot of danger in the examination hall. Now having said that, I will not end this problem at this point itself. Wherever there is a possibility of teaching my students multiple methods, I will teach you multiple methods. It is completely up to you which method to pick it and solve it. Now see here, method three, method three, I will solve it by using answer options. Now you might suddenly get it out, sir, method two also you solved it by using answer options, right? Method three also you are saying that you will solve it by answer options, what is that you are trying to convey here? Yes sir, method two I solved by answer options by using a condition saying that it should be a perfect square. Method three also I will solve by answer options because all the options are little far away from each other. I will try to use approximation method. What are you saying sir? Hold on, let me first list out the answer options. Thirty-one, twenty-three root five, twenty-seven root five, twenty-five, yes, let me list out thirty-one. Second option is twenty-three root five, third option is twenty-seven root five. And the fourth option is twenty-five, right, twenty-five. Now see here sir, very, very simple, thirty-one, first option is thirty-one, fourth option is twenty-five. They are not closer to each other, they are having a difference of six units between them. So they are pretty far from each other. Second option is twenty-three root five, root five is more than two, greater than two. Because root four is exactly equal to two, root five is slightly greater than two. In fact approximately root five is two point two. So twenty-three into two, it is greater than forty-six. So thirty-one and forty-six are pretty far from each other. Twenty-seven root five, twenty-seven into two is fifty-four. Thirty-one, forty-six, fifty-four, twenty-five, all these are very, very far from each other. So I can use a concept of approximation. Now what is that they have given in this question? A value is root five plus one, B value is root five minus one. Now see here sir, beautiful way of solving, A value is root five plus one. Root five is approximately two point two, two point two plus one is three point two. B value is root five minus one, two point two minus one is one point two. Now what is that they are asking you in the question, what is being asked in the question? Question says, you need to find, you need to find A by B whole square, A by B whole square, let me open it sir. Okay, now see here sir, so nothing to worry, do not worry, method one and method two are not visible in the screen right now. They are erased totally because suddenly the P P T what I was using, it stopped because of some technical issues or some issues, whatever it is. So nothing to worry sir, let us directly move on to method three, right? Method three is what I were discussing from approximation. So A value will be equal to, so how much it is, two, two point two plus one, it is three point two. B value will be two point two minus one, it is one point two. Now first value is A square by B square or it is A by B whole square. First of all, let me find A by B, it is approximately three point two by two point two, thirty-two by twelve. Eight into, four into eight is thirty-two, four into three is twelve. Similarly, if A by B is eight by three, B by A will be three by eight. Three by eight in our percentages class, we have discussed it as thirty-seven point five percent. That means it is zero point three seven five. Similarly, eight by three, it is approximately two point five, right? I am just approximating everything because all the four options are pretty far from each other. So instead of saying eight by three as two point six six, I am taking it as two point five. Now see here sir, what is that they are asking you? A by B whole square, that means eight by three whole square. Eight by three whole square is sixty-four divided by nine. Plus second term is B by A whole square. B by A whole square is nothing but zero point three seven five whole square. Now think little logically sir, zero point three seven five itself is a smaller value. Zero point three is very closer to zero, right? That itself is a smaller value, when I square zero point three seven five, that will be even more smaller value. Forget about zero point three seven five, only assume it as zero point three. Zero point three if I square, it will become zero point zero nine. It is even more smaller value, it is almost tending to zero. So I can eliminate it and I'll, I'll assume it as zero, right? I can approximate it as zero itself, multiplied, sorry, four times of A divided by B. A by B is eight by three or approximately it is two point five, right? Two point five plus four times of B by A, fourth term is B by A. B by A is zero point three, approximate it to zero. Sir, how can you just say zero point three as zero sir? I can say it because all the answer options are very far from each other sir. That is the reason I am taking it so much of approximation. The last term is six, if I further simplify, sixty-three divided by nine is seven. Sixty-four divided by nine is approximately seven once again. Plus four into two point five is approximately ten, six is added. Seventeen plus six is, answer should be very closer to twenty-three. Now many student might do this particular mistake. Because the answer is closer to twenty-three, they will mark it as twenty-three root three because twenty-three number is present there. It is incorrect, root, sorry, twenty-three root five, root five I told it as two point two. Twenty-three into two point is closer to fifty, it is not closer to twenty-three, that cannot be the right answer. Thirty-one is also slightly far away from twenty-three, ruled out. Twenty-seven root five is even more far away from twenty-three, ruled out. The only option which is closer to twenty-three is twenty-five. That means before this particular P P T suddenly abrupted and before I reopened it. I have taught you method one wherein I, I told you how to actually think about A plus B whole square format. I have taught you method two wherein I told you that the answer should be a perfect square, there is only one option. And I right now taught you method three which is an approximation method. I have taught you three different methods for this particular question. It is completely up to you an individual to pick up the method whichever you are comfortable with. I am not saying that method one is good, I am not saying method two is good, I am not even saying method three is good. I am saying as a teacher, my role is to teach you multiple methods. And as a student, your role is to pick up the method which you are comfortable with. So choose whichever the method which you are comfortable and keep solving that particular method in the examination. In the most fastest way possible. I hope the first twenty-eight questions of this particular topic on algebra is very, very. Clear for each and every student who is listening to this class.